I made you a list for organizational.
Yeah, I was just looking for the printout that I had for the meeting, but that's okay.
There's a hard copy right there.
I was looking for the agenda, but that's okay.
Oh, hang on, I'll give you an agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
Yes.
Four heart attacks.
No deliveries necessary here, please. I've got it, Kelsey. Now that I've dug deep enough to find my packet. I found one, Kelsey. Thank you.
As long as I don't hit my belly or get, or I get stomped, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, call the board. Have we done a roll call yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
All right, I'm here.
Yeah, why are you not on my list? Um, yeah, Mr. Hazen.
Just term expired, 12/31/21.
I guess, right? No. All right. Any changes to the minutes from August? I don't have any O's in here, so.
From what I read, in my opinion, no.
Okay. Got a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that, Kelsey.
Asher?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Actually, Ryan wasn't there at that meeting, I don't think. We can't vote.
Oh, so you can't, and you know what? I probably have the wrong sheet for them. It's okay.
Kelsey, you can actually, as an alternate, you can go on the minutes.
You want me to vote on the minutes?
Yeah. Because if you don't, then, because Tom is not here.
All right, and this is Russell, yes.
Okay. Are we going to the 2204 appeal? Are we going to set that aside? Do we have something?
Well, I guess, initially, I saw an email that was generated today.
I just went back to get it.
Frank referenced it as well. Again, I think Mr. Emdy raised it. I'm Tom Rane, by the way.
He's our attorney.
So it's a good question. I think the key criteria is really that the sign was posted. It has to be posted for so many days and advance the meeting. You know, if somebody had questions about the agenda, that'd be one thing, but the sign is really what calls people's attention to it. Regardless of that, I think, as Tim mentioned, that we couldn't really take any formal action. This application might probably for a couple of reasons. First of which, the matter has to be referred to the Clinton County Planning Board. It sounds like it's gone. I don't know when it went, but obviously, we don't have.
We don't have it picked in trouble.
I don't have their, we don't have their input back yet, and it probably won't be heard till the meeting, which is, I think it's the first Wednesday, right? Of each month, and so we could perhaps hear this next month. The one thing that was pointed out, Kelsey, and you probably saw it too, on the agenda, it said this property is 544 Sober, which is not.
So I'm gonna tell you why.
No, because that's his address, right?
Right, but this is what I go by?
Right.
So if nothing is there?
Right.
I go there.
Yeah, I know, but that can't be it, because if people looked at the agenda and say, well, that, looking at Sober, that's not where the address where this application is. I mean, what you really probably have to do, delving into it further, because I don't know if his actual 911 address for the property, but it's on Route 22B.
There may not be one at this point.
Right, because there's nothing there. It's vacant land. So it shouldn't be at least New York State Route 22B, and perhaps you could put the tax map number on it, because I think he put a tax map.
Is that a tax map number? Okay.
I think he did.
Hard to love.
Yeah.
So just in going forward, if it's, if it's gonna be on the agenda for next one.
Or you could refer it back as having number one not done, and we can't proceed until we have a completed form. Because the location of the property is not listed on the application.
Right, unfortunately, it was accepted by Bill, so we do, we have, kind of accepted it. So regardless of that, on our agenda, that should be corrected. You're not wrong. The notice is posted, so if we had the county feedback, and if Mr. Ashline was here, I think we probably could proceed based on what has been done. At least if we can confirm that the notice was up there, the sign was posted, everything else was good. So however, we know it has to go to the county, number one. Number two, Mr. Ashline is not here to kind of answer any questions we have. And he really needs to be here, because I think, assuming the board has maybe some questions of him, some details. And without him here, we really can't take any action regardless, so. So with respect to his application going forward, you're right, the agenda will get corrected to make sure it reflects where the property is more specifically, rather than his home address. But if the sign's been out there and it stays out there, it's certainly gonna be there a lot longer than it really needs to be, but that's okay.
And I did drive by, and it was out.
Yeah.
More than a week ago.
Well, it's hard to know.
I heard that it was out, so.
Probably because I was new, I looked.
No, you were doing the right thing.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I looked at the agenda, and I saw that address, and then on the front page of this, I glanced at that. So I headed to 544 Sober, and I said, oh, there's a nice big filter here that's great for, and I thought maybe somebody from the general public might make the same mistake. But then I also thought that if somebody did want to come and speak, their only way of knowing about that would be to look for the agenda, you know, when's that meeting? So they would think maybe it was the wrong meeting.
There's a number of ways. First of all, their sign is posted out there, so you can see that. The agenda, we need to correct, make sure it lists the proper address of the property, so we're gonna do that. But regardless of that, it's not like somebody's not gonna have an opportunity to speak, because we can't take any action on it regardless.
Right.
So we correct that, we make sure it's correct in the paper. If it wasn't correct in the paper, I don't know if it was listed in the paper for the address of the property.
It's the address that was on the application, that's the only address.
Mr. Rane, is there, is there a way to, has there ever been another use variance filed on this piece of property? I mean, I guess.
Well, I don't know that. I mean, the only person that probably, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know that. Maybe the store account knows that, but I don't know.
I mean, the reason I'm asking is because obviously, there've been a lot of filth brought into this.
Well, originally, Mark Allen was gonna build a couple of houses in there.
Okay.
And it was zoned for that, so he was within, you know, what he needed, because he originally was in Hill's Top Estates with his father-in-law.
Right.
So that was the plan, and then he ran into financial hardship himself.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at this going, okay, why, you know, you're asking for a use variance in a residential property.
Well, it's technically in an HC zone.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's HC there. Sober Street is an RR1.
Right.
But I believe this property is in an HC zone.
Because you've got two businesses right there.
But even in an HC zone, this doesn't fall under, I mean, self-storage units are not a listed permitted use. So if you look at the HC zone and how that falls.
Yeah. Okay, I looked in my book there and saw that.
Yeah, technically, it comes under what's deemed a non-listed commercial or industrial use.
Right.
In an HC zone. Now, this raises an interesting question as well, because in HC zone, it does also say non-listed commercial or industrial use could be a special permit. Unless we call it warehousing and distribution, which, I mean, it's not.
It's not, no.
It's not ware, technically, it kind of is warehousing, but it's not a distribution site, like a truck terminal or something like that. And again, unfortunately, Bill's not here to kind of tell us, okay, how did you draw that conclusion? It's pretty clearly in an HC zone, but if it's a non-listed commercial in an HC zone, technically, it's a special permit, it could be a special permitted use. Or regarding special use approval as compared to use variance.
Right, right.
But.
See, that's, I mean, the only map I have is the one in the back of this book, which is.
It's hard to read this.
Yeah, this is better like this.
Yeah, so if you look at it, you can see where the lot is, I think, on this, in the HC zone coming down on Route 22.
Let me see, there's a copy of that, I think, in Bill's office. Let me see if I can blow that copy out. Not right now, but.
It's in the diary.
Ten minutes.
I don't have my keys to Bill's office, so.
I actually have a picture hanging on Kevin's wall, and that's what I'm looking for, but I can't find it right now.
Yeah, so, I mean, so that's, there's a couple of issues here that we probably need to try to weed through, and unfortunately, A, Bill isn't here to do that.
Right.
And B, the applicant's not here to do that.
Well, exactly, yeah.
So I think the only real action we can do on this, I mean, we're gonna get back here back from the county. Regardless, if Bill did submit it to them within the last couple of weeks, but I would say we'd have to table this application to next month. To hear back from the county, but also probably advise the applicant, he needs to be here, because we may have some other questions, and hopefully, Mr. LaCount can be here.
Right.
All right.
So we don't, that's interesting, we don't have a requirement for the applicant or their representative to be here on?
Oh, yeah, I think we do.
I think we do, too, yeah.
I mean, we can't just vote on something, especially if people have questions. We need to, we need to have, the applicant needs to be here.
Yeah.
All right. So let's, I'm looking at a calendar to look at next month, unless you want to do a motion to table it, and then.
Well, we should do that, for you.
But even, even next month, I mean, I don't know if we'd even want to schedule a public hearing on it yet, because again, we may still have questions about it before we even do that.
Right. So we could, you know, table it until we hear back from the county, and then.
And request the applicant to be present.
And request the applicant to be present, and then put it on an agenda once we hear back from the county.
It's gonna be HR, I don't think. She's got them.
I'll make a motion that we table Appeal 2204.
I'll second the motion.
Until, until we hear back from the county on their status of it. Also, that the application be updated to include the location of the property. And that it then be put on the agenda, and when it's on the agenda, that the applicant or his designated representative be present to answer questions.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes. Thanks for the email and getting the. All right, that moves us to the organizational section of the meeting, which we would normally do in January, but we expect that somebody may not quite be ready to work yet.
Sorry. I'll try, but no guarantees.
We can't do it without you. Okay. According to this slate of officers.
That's not in any specific order, it's just the things that we need to do.
Okay. I got a lot, some of these we haven't done in the past, but I'm not.
No, and some of that is just my notes.
Okay.
It's not.
Well, then, let's start with a, I suggest we maintain the meeting for the third Tuesday of the month.
Third Monday.
Third Monday, sorry, third Monday of the month at 6:30.
I second. Yes.
Do we need to do these one at a time on votes, or do we?
You probably should.
Okay. Go forward. Use the scene, yeah.
I mean, you say a lot, you can buy your own.
Third Monday, 6:30 at Town Hall.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody want to nominate a different attorney, or would somebody like to agree we keep our existing attorney?
I mean, if we keep her, we do.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you.
So keep Tom Rane as zoning board of appeals attorney.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
And Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
If she can get back to us, I move Kelsey as our secretary and watchdog.
I'll be back to you guys. It just might not be right away.
As long as she promises not to fall like that.
No, 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 trust me, I didn't, that was not a planned thing. Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
And Mr. Hazen?
Yes. All right. I don't think the clerk duties on this list, we have anything particular that we've listed in the past.
No, no, that's just, that's just my notes.
Okay.
All the rest of it from 6 to 9 is just my.
Okay, okay, good. They're also ones we haven't done.
Yeah, we'll talk, yeah, I just put them on there, because if I didn't put them there, I was gonna forget about them.
That's all good.
Okay. We need a new vice chair.
And we're looking to see if anybody wants to be chair, please.
I make the motion Frank stays as chair.
I second the motion.
Oh, yeah, that too.
Took care of everybody.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Definitely. I make motion, we make Mr. Hazen vice chair.
Avex.
You can also be good at it when I'm not here.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Absolutely.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
And Mr. Hazen?
Upsticking.
Well played.
All right, that's what I'm marking.
All right. Well, that takes care of, is there anything else on our organizational, Tom, that you'd like?
From the legal standpoint?
I mean, man, I know in the past, we've asked the town board to, you know, review, and I know it's been an ongoing process of getting some of the changes made to the zoning ordinance to bring it up to date. I know there's a committee meeting to do that, so at least I think there's some activity, and I think Mr. Randall is certainly interested in trying to update the zoning ordinance and take some steps to do that.
It would be.
So I think there is some progress being made on that, and for short of that, I think, you know, the other actions you've taken tonight are usually what you see. I guess one of the other things we normally do, even though, I guess you did it already, was usually there's like a future calendar setup of meetings, but we've already settled on the date and time.
Yes.
That's just gonna carry forward.
Okay.
Come on, so it's, it's not like we said, okay, when's that date gonna be in April? When's that date gonna be in May?
Oh, you mean, you want like set?
I mean.
Is it easier to do a set?
You can.
But third Monday.
But if you, because if you look far enough ahead, maybe there's some dates that are gonna be conflicts, like when a Christmas falls on that day, then you say, well, like, we're not gonna do it on Christmas, so.
Right.
Well.
And we tend to make that change a month before, or two months before.
Yeah, we can, so I mean.
Would you like me to say excluding holidays in the motion?
No, no, I think it's fine. I think it's fine. In the past, what we've normally done is adjust those dates.
Okay.
If they're presented in a conflict or whatever.
Okay.
It's fine.
Hopefully, the board member Hazen expiring 12/31/2021 is a mistake.
Probably is.
That's an old one.
So that's, that one's really old, but I haven't updated it in a while, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go home and look.
Yeah, please update.
In my, in my files, and just see who's where. I can't remember if it's, it's not Mr. Smith or Mr. Emdy, and it's, I don't think it's you, Mr. Dorance. But there, there is a board member expiring, and I just can't remember who it is. I want to say that it's Mr. Alvin. When I talked to Donna, that was what she had mentioned.
He was filling in Dawn's.
He was filling in Dawn's spot, I think, so I will have to go back and look and see.
But if it is in 2022, you just need to get that to the town.
Right.
Or the big and the update.
So I will just put it in the minutes that that's what we want to do, and they'll, and they'll update, and then I'll call you, and.
Why don't we ask the town, we can ask the town board to please, please renew any expiring members.
And if, and Kelsey did pass off that sheet, and if anybody could just, like, Tim, put your information, Ryan, put your information.
And we also.
It's right there.
Put all your contact information on this, so she can get updated sheet.
Add your email to the list, because she does communicate with emails.
Yeah.
Oh, she's online.
Yeah, she has it, but I'm just saying that just, if she doesn't have it, make sure.
You guys will get a hard copy of that.
Yeah.
So the, the other thing that I just wanted to mention, I've spoken with Mr. Randall, and some of my duties have changed since we went electronic. So, which is fine, but at this point, I don't get paid unless we have a meeting.
How do we change that?
So I would like to change that, because regardless of whether we have a meeting or not, there's always filing to do, there's, there's always something. So my thoughts are, if the town board is willing to pay me monthly, that if we do not have a meeting, I will send out an email. And I will say, I don't know, I'll have to sit down and clock how many hours I spend per meeting, really. And I'll put the hours in, in the office, doing just my office stuff, instead of.
Well, there's months that you spend a ridiculous number of hours.
Yes.
Having for these meetings.
Yes.
Best thing Kelsey to do is keep track of your hours in a notebook or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, that's not, I mean, we could make a recommendation to the town board, but the town board is the entity that's.
Right, right. No, but I just wanted to mention it to this board before I say to the town board, hey, can you, do you pay me monthly? Like.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion that the board would like to have Kelsey's work hours and schedule adjusted to reflect the current operation of the board using electronic notifications.
Thank you, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was looking for.
Other duties that evolved that are not directly related to meetings.
Yeah.
And that just goes to the town board.
Yeah, that, and that's all, that's, that's just what I needed in order to put something in writing to the town board for myself.
So I'll make that motion.
From, from you guys.
So, Kelsey, you're gonna have to document that and then send it to them.
No, trust me, it's in the works, because I already started talking.
But let's, we're making it official, but we, the board would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Mr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Emdy?
Yes.
I didn't forget anybody, did I? No.
Yourself.
She's not, there's nothing but her.
There's not, I'm not loading.
That's unfair.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. After organizational items, we move to old business. I think we're pretty much up to date on old business.
We have a receipt of an appeal or anything from Farm?
Nope.
He's out of time.
No, that, yeah, that, that period of time would have expired. I mean, following Article 78, they have 30 days from the date of decision filed in the town clerk's office, which is.
Last time I wasn't here.
Which happens almost immediate, so, yeah, so, yeah, there's nothing, nothing coming.
Okay, that particular, we won't see that particular request for at least a year, because you gotta wait a year after.
Yeah, there's been some, he's spoken to.
Bill, I guess.
Bill, he's also spoken to Hager and the planning board about different farm aspects, or whether it's doing a brewery there or something, but he had to grow it to do it. And, and the farm is not an operational farm, so he'd have to do a lot of different things to bring it to a point where it's an operational farm, because it's not now.
I was just curious, because I didn't make the last.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing new has happened.
Okay.
Can we, I don't know if we can make some sort of motion to get all of us new zoning maps. I know, I know there's a, I know there's a whole rezoning going on.
No, that, that's years out.
But just so we have something, I've got the thing in the back of the book.
Can you try and get a, get us, you know, a legitimate size, whether legal or bigger zoning map?
I mean, the bigger, the better.
Like, like, are you talking about the map that's in the back of the zoning law? Are you talking about something?
No, we're talking about the one of the zoning laws, but if we can get, start from a pseudo-original and get a large format version.
So I think that's the one that's in Bill's office that I blew up once before.
Is he able to pick one on the wall?
I actually have a big one on the wall.
And see if we can get that one copied.
Get that one copied?
Yes.
This doesn't, bigger would be more.
Yeah, bigger would.
Yeah, it's, there's no question it's hard to.
Yeah.
And it's been copied since '7, well, a while.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, even if, even if the town board would authorize.
I'll take it to Staples and copy it.
Well, the, but, yeah.
You know?
Either, either that or just authorize some other entity to basically create a better zoning map than what we have. I mean, it could just be, be reprinted, it could be.
It could be somebody actually laying it on to a nice geographic map with the road shown and the like.
Right, right, color-coded and stuff, so it'd be easier, much easier to see the one we've got, and much easier to make questions.
So if we could see, ask Mr. Randall what we can do, I'm sure he'd be. I mean, we'll. Anything else newish?
I have a question, I'm not sure about the timing, but I'd like to go to the training in New York, and I think Mr. Randall said at one of the public meetings that any of the board members that wanted to go could go. But when I asked somebody, I don't remember who I spoke to, but they said, make sure that you have the funds in the budget.
I, we have in the years past, but I don't know what this year's, I don't, didn't see the final version of this year's budget. We used to send one to that meeting on an annual basis.
Well, I understand the next board meeting, they want to make approvals. How do I go about applying or saying?
I mean, I suppose if you're interested in doing that, I think what you can do is, I mean, if anybody, if nobody here has any objection to it, is just, just maybe submitting a letter or something, writing to Mr. Randall and saying, I'm interested in attending the session in New York City, whenever it's gonna be. I forget, it's February, January, whatever that month it is.
President's.
And then just, just confirm that, that there's available funds and budget to do that.
Are any of the board members all?
Yeah.
Okay, talk to them.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, but I'd, but even, you know, put something and write it to him, whether even just an email.
Well, they did say at a public meeting that there was funding for everybody with them, and I asked whoever answered the phone or whoever I spoke to, said, I think they checked with Mr. Dorance, the.
The budget, you, I don't really get any, I get a copy of what they're throwing out, but it's one-line item. It doesn't really give me any.
Yeah, I mean, so I would just admit, I'd send an email to Mr. Randall about your interest.
In the past, one member of this board wanted to go and went pretty regularly.
Yes, yeah, how's a new member?
Yeah, no, it's great, the training's wonderful, and in the past, and I don't know if it's gonna come up again, the county.
I think it's anybody that wanted to go.
Yeah, the county periodically has run zoning board and appeal board trainings run by the state. And if we, they will give us a notice when they're going to do one. I have not seen the notice recently, but I have attended those in the past when they've run them. They bring people in from the state. And the whole, anybody in the county who wants to go.
Yeah, they usually hold them in the meeting room, the government center on the first floor. They usually, I mean, during COVID, they'd have them very often, basically. But they usually just have them like once a year, which is pretty good, a couple hours.
And I think they also gave, see, working hours towards people, people whose jobs require them to have a certain number of hours of training, got those hours by attending those meetings.
Technically, I think we're supposed to get those hours of training, too.
Are we?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll talk to Kevin.
I think it's four hours a year.
Okay.
Correct.
Just see what, what his plan is for required training.
Yeah.
Sounds good.